Do I sign in?
Um. I don't think you need to sign in, if we have too many people.
Well, I signed in when I came in September and I was the only resident here.
Oh, wow.
And I'm not on the minutes.
Oh, really? All right, well, which means for those who can go correct.
DTSOLN, right? Your last name, DTSOLN?
Not even close.
No? Go Branson.
G U L.
G U L.
B R.
A.
A N D.
Yeah.
S E N.
S E N.
Yeah, no T.
No T, it's me. S E N, I haven't good enough over there. Branson. Not go Brent some.
C.
Yeah. And and see in.
Oh. Make sure it's real loud.
What's that?
Make sure your ringer is really, really loud.
You like that ringer?
I did.
Call me.
Sometime I will. Yeah.
It'll be a long night tonight.
I hope not.
I don't either.
Oh, you're a jerk. Well, the time is six thirty, I'm gonna officially bring the meeting to order. So we can get over with it. Thank you for everybody coming out of our planning commission meeting tonight, we're not thrown, thank you. Uh, first order of business, uh, agenda review, hi, so you don't need to move anything around, Russell Gorman feel that way?
Uh, don't need to move anything around, but transportation chapter is not here.
It is, it's on the second edition in, wasn't it, Brian? The second email.
Okay, but I haven't, I haven't gone to talk to Ray yet, it's not ready.
Oh, okay.
Just tell him.
Oh, no, I was saying the utilities, I'm sorry, that was in the second email, my bad.
Some maker suggesting we table up.
Yeah, I, I think that one's, we're not.
That's by me, right, strike number ten.
I think we've got plenty to talk about tonight.
Yes, I do.
I thought so too, that's why I didn't. Get all freaked out early. No, I mean, I'll, I'll make that through that for the next meeting.
Uh, comments from the chair and the land use administrator, I have none, Brian, do you have any comments? So, comments from citizens regarding items not on the agenda. Hearing none, moving on to the approval of the meeting minutes for October sixth, two thousand twenty five. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for October sixth, two thousand twenty five pending corrections?
Some moved.
Second. Motion is second, uh, Brian's made the motion, who did the second?
Howard.
Howard did the second. All right, uh, any discussion on the minutes, I have to say, I do like the format, um. Games are good, seems like everything was noted for my.
Nicely done.
Yes, I.
I like it.
I like them. Any other comments from the chair or the, uh, the board on the minutes? Everybody's had a chance to review them. Hearing none, motion to approve the minutes for October sixth, two thousand twenty five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And any instructions? Motion for the meeting minutes passed, thank you. Thank you. Um, item number six, bylaw discussion, uh, private requirements, non-conforming lots merger. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I had an application come before me and, um, this is on Melody Lane. It's a lot that's made up of two tax parcels, so it shows up as one, as the listers merge them. Typically, when that happens, um, if two contiguous parcels come under common ownership, one gets, um, inactive. And basically lumped, if that were to ever sell again, it would be reactivated and used as an independent parcel. Basically, if you own two and, um, under the same ownership, you still have the right to develop i- either. Um, and to sell one without having to subdivide again.
Question for you, uh, on that, so say you have the two lots, you merge them together, does that? Boundary line between the two lots still, uh, affect both of them as far as setbacks?
They didn't merge them.
They didn't merge them, but.
Towns eyes, they're considered one parcel, I mean, typically the larger parcel becomes the owner.
Right, but that's.
Setbacks and, and property line, they don't change.
Right, so that, that boundary line still exists and they still need to meet setbacks from that boundary line in case themselves. Um, there's still two legal lots and they could develop it with a new primary use on that other lot, so they retain those, the value of two different lots. Um, unless they were to be merged by deed, in which case that boundary line goes away, they own one legal lot. And if they were to break it off and sell it, they'd have to go through a subdivision.
That's correct.
My understanding is it's just an administrative way of the tax office sending you a bill with one lot under under.
All right, amazing.
We have.
So it makes a lot of, a little bit easier for the paperwork.
Exactly.
I, I, it's basically handled in the lister's office.
Okay.
It's not a zoning issue.
Yeah, I was just curious, I'm like, oh, boy, this could open up a whole can of worms right here.
Well, what, yeah, what he's talking about is, is exactly right, if they do merge them. Uh, then they become one lot, and if they ever decide to go back to two lots again. In, in particularly, if, if they were, uh, let, let's say it was two lots, a, a three acre and a four acre lot in a C ten.
System not conforming.
They just, they're, they're non-conforming, but they're two lots and you can still sell the four acre lot if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Um, but once they merge it.
Right.
They're done, you're not going back the other way ever again.
Right.
But I don't feel that this is that simple.
Yeah, so let me get into this, I'm gonna pull up my, um, see if I can share my screen. Um, so I can show you this lot.
Is that the email you sent us?
Yeah, it's that lot.
Yeah.
Um.
There's an email you sent us.
No, 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 I sent it to, uh, Joe and Ryan and we're setting up the agenda just to confirm that, I can throw it on there.
And we haven't, you haven't said what the problem is yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Great. I jumped in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's see.
It's coming. I want to share. Share. Person one. Okay. So, Melody Lane, down here.
All right.
You want to?
This. This is the parcel. Um, and I'm gonna turn on the inactive parcel layer, so there's the parcel line, I'll just click away from that, so that goes away. Um, that orange dotted line is the boundary is between the two lots. This one does not have any structure on it and it is inactive. Um. And as you can see, the house is very close to that line, um. So. It's, it's a non-conforming structure in that sense, um, I should have thought more about how I would present this, um. This lot appears to have one acre and it's in the one acre zone, so it's not non-conforming in that sense. But it is non-conforming in terms of the, uh, frontage. So the request that I got was from this owner, he wants to build a barn, um. And understands that if this boundary, if this is a inactive parcel, which we confirmed that it is, um, he needs to meet that setback distance. Um, however, he doesn't have the frontage. For that, um. For that parcel, and so I guess one of the questions that comes to mind is the, the minimum lot size. And the frontage requirements seem to me like they're really applicable when it's a subdivision. New lots that are being created, they need to have the frontage and the minimum lot size. We, there's the state statute that says, um, existing small lots, lots that don't meet the minimum lot size that predate zoning, um. Or subdivision regulations can be developed despite not having the minimum lot size. There is no statute that I found that specifically addresses the frontage on that. I've always sort of treated it the same way, basically, it's a non-conforming lot that existed, um. So in this case. One, one complicating factor is he doesn't have the frontage for me to issue the permit, normally I'd probably say that it's a, it's a. Existing small lot, but that's not the case here, um.
Because the lot's not small, the road frontage is, and so calling small lots not.
Right, that, that statute doesn't necessarily.
And it meets the one acre minimum size and yes.
Yeah, so there's another bylaw that says, um. When a non-conforming lot comes under ownership with, uh, in a budding conforming lot, they should. I'll, I'll read you the language when we get to it, but they can be merged. Um, and what I'm unclear about is how that functions, because there needs to be some kind of action taken to merge them. Um, is that mandatory for them to develop the other lot, so, so these are some of the issues that I'm trying to work through.
Mike, you have to tell them.
I, I do. What is the language for non-conforming? My understanding of a non-conforming law is it cannot be made more non-conforming, which would mean. The, the, your frontage is your non-conformance, right?
Yeah.
They're not gonna do anything that's gonna change that. When they, if they build a barn somewhere, if they follow the existing setbacks, they're not making it more non-conforming. So, so I'm not sure the conformance becomes an issue here.
I guess the only question in my mind is, if you don't have the frontage, what about the access to the, to the room? I just threw that out.
Well, that, that was my next question, I mean, where, how is he getting to this barn, what the?
So there is kind of an existing, uh, farm style access that's not, um. That's not necessarily permitted, but there's, there's roads and stuff here, he says he's been using with his side by side, just getting to know his property. Um. So the non-conforming language, basically, it takes the state statute, existing small lots can be developed for the purposes of the district. And then it says merger in a district, if a lot not conforming to the minimum lot size in the district which is located, okay, so that's specific to minimum lot size. Um. So. I guess the, the key question is, can, can they develop a lot that doesn't have the existing frontage?
Frontage, that's really a question.
That's not explicitly stated, but that's typically how I've treated it.
But to Mike's point, you're not making the non-conformity any worse if they comply with all the setbacks. The only. Technical difference would be they don't have the frontage for a driver to the main road, but. But if they're gonna access the barn from the adjoining lot.
Then that's, that's a muted issue, if they're gonna, if they're gonna, if they're gonna access it from the main road. I, I, I think you just get the, um, uh, the, the highway superintendent. To, uh, he typically goes out and signs off on line sites, if, if, if he's got, he might have a small frontage, but if he's got plenty of site room. It's not really an issue, is it? Cause I think that's the, there, there's two, two points to having the, the, the frontage. That, that, so you don't have driveways right on top of each other and, and so that you've got line of sight.
So in our, uh, bylaws, cause it's talking about separation. Between.
Between.
Access, no, it doesn't be, cause that's in the new thing that I'm working on too.
And, and to be clear, I, I think, um, you go, you gotta go back to the early seventies. That, to see where this frontage came from, it was to stop spaghetti lots.
Or, or what we call flag, that's right.
Right, yeah, flag lot, spaghetti lots, it's that.
Right, now look, uh, picture the add up of the property, he owns all of that that's in yellow also?
No, um, only. I don't know why that one's still yellow, um.
That one's selected, that's why it's yellow.
Usually when I hit the arrow, it deselects, this is his lot, um, or lots, he has these two.
Can you say how he's accessing the building, Ryan?
Um, he, I think, I believe it's off, off the road.
Would that create a new nine one one address?
If it has, um, wifi services or telephone services.
So, uh, a driveway cut though onto the main road wouldn't be the only triggering point to make it as a both new property number.
Um, you're right, then the nine one one numbers have to be tied to wireless or some, or telephone service.
Yeah, I, to me, the only thing I see here is a frontage issue, but it's not, it's not primary residence, it's a barn, it's not gonna be used to, as an accessory dwelling unit?
So, r- right, as far as I know at this point, and if he was, would that change the? How the frontage aspect weighs in on this, if, it's, cause it is its own parcel, if you wanted to develop it as its own, does the frontage matter at this point?
I will believe, for me, only in a matter of line site, as, as long as it's safe, it, it doesn't bother me. Uh, because again, it's, it's an existing lot prior to that, that change in zoning.
Yeah, and I think the only place the bylaws talk about that would be in the subdivision regulations, but that's for a newly created lot, so we don't.
Correct.
Conform, don't create non-conformity.
Right. This is beyond us.
It's our, the pipeline goes away, he's merging the two of those.
Yeah.
No, he's, no, he's not merging, no, he's not.
He has two parcels.
He's gonna keep it separate.
Oh, really?
Um. Part of the question is too, it's a one acre minimum lot size, when I measure it on GAS based on these tax parcel lines, it's just about exactly one acre. Who's to say that that's the exact location of those boundaries, um.
And tough, but what is the lister card save for?
One acre.
We gotta go with that.
Right. Uh, in, in terms of like measuring setbacks and things like that, uh, that was what I told him, this is the tax parcel.
Forty feet. All around?
Uh, forty feet from the highway right of way, I think it's twenty five from sides.
Why was Gorman that?
This is the RR one district, twenty five, um.
Which is still hefty.
Mm-hmm.
And then the rear, it's a pretty big one too, isn't it?
It's also twenty five.
And so, because I'm RR one.
Um, so I guess sort of the question that I wanted to raise is, is the zoning bylaws the place to even be discussing minimum lot sizes and frontages? Cause it seems like whenever it comes up for me, it's only a factor for subdivision. Um, I confirmed to see that they have the minimum lot size, but if they don't, they don't need it, so.
I think there needs to be some sort of language somewhere, I don't know exactly where, for the pre-existing non-conforming lots. That deals with that type of stuff, or like, we're only creating lot, or you know, this, the setbacks in the road frontage for new lots, but there are hundreds. Of lots out there that don't have that, how many of those get caught up in that dragon?
Well, well, so that's already existing, that's state statute one way or another, well, I think our bylaws will always make reference to that.
It, it, yeah, and I, and I think you say there's hundreds of lots and there's probably a hundred different reasons.
Yeah.
That makes your language very complicated.
Yeah.
I mean, and then just looking at the writing at driveway standard, which I've been kind of packing away on solely. That, you know, there are a lot of issues come up with that, it's amazing how involved that is to write a driveway standard, but you get into things like site distances. And separations, because you look back at what we already have for subdivision, but in this situation here. I think no harm, no foul here, is my opinion, I, as long as the highway superintendent goes out and says a highway access, because he's not granting a driveway permit, he's only. Granting a highway access permit, that's all he's doing, and if he says it looks good from a safety perspective, from, from his perspective, from drainage.
Let it go.
I think, I, to me, that'd be my, my opinion, that, as he complies with the setbacks, it's existing non-conforming lot. In terms of only because of the road frontage.
Right. Um, another theoretical question, if this was, uh, a non-conforming lot due to its size. That triggers that merger language, has, I've done one in, actually, I did do one here. Um, the landowner wanted to do a merger because they didn't want to have to meet the setback from their, their line, so they did, um. So that, I guess that was a different case, if there was a non-conforming lot due to size, how does that, um?
Isn't it automatic?
It says automatic, but technically. Sudden action needs to be taken, like it needs to be merged by deed, so you're basically saying it's automatically merged, but you have to go out.
But what happens if you buy a lot that's three quarters of an acre, you have the right to develop it. So what you mean, the setbacks?
But if you own the land next to it. Are, am I able to grant a permit for its own individual development, even though we have language saying it needs to be merged?
It's a separate lot.
Okay, but what about this?
You just the language, yeah.
What about this, uh? Any district, um. If a lot not conforming to the minimum lot size requirements in the district. In which the lot is located subsequently comes under common ownership with one or more contiguous lots. The non-conforming lot shall be der- deemed merged with the contiguous lot.
Okay.
So does that mean they lose the ability to develop that lot automatically? They don't need to merge it by deed, but technically I can't grant them a permit to develop it because it's part of the same.
Based on that language, that would be correct, yeah.
And that.
I'm not sure I like it, but I think that's what it is.
And they, so. Um, if they wanted to develop it with an accessory structure, they would be allowed to do that.
As long as they merge the lots.
They would have to merge lots first by deed.
Yeah, based on that language. Because, because the situation you're dealing with now, it's conforms except for setback. I mean, if you wanna find you the fine points of that, you could say it doesn't read the setback, or that, I'm sorry, the road frontage.
It, well, but the, in the interest of, of expense and cost, somebody might come in and say, where in that language does it say I have to redo my deed? And redo my, I mean, it's, it, it, the, the, the lots already exist, the lot deans probably already exist. And that language right there says they just became one, they're no longer separate. And, and it's not because it's non-conforming and it fell under common ownership, it can't be, it can no longer be sold as a non-conforming lot. And developed.
Right.
It, 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 that language says it just became part of this other lot, so now your three acre lots now three point two or three point six, whatever. And you have one lot.
So. If it's deemed merged for zoning purposes, it still exists as a separate lot and it's deed, it could be transferred away. There, that, that right doesn't go away just because of our bylaw.
I don't take it for it, no.
Right, so they would be able to sell that, but not that small, existing small lot to someone else.
So is.
And then they would have the right to develop it because it's not under common ownership.
No, because it, when, as soon as it came under common ownership, it became one lot.
But that's only for zoning purposes, the, the deed would have to get changed. For them to be prohibited from selling it again.
So you're speaking of this situation here?
No, 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 this is more, this is theory.
If that's the case, then it's not a lawful bylaw.
Okay, yeah, so I'm, this, this is the same language that I had in Rockingham and I'm curious about the mechanics of it, because.
So I think this is a great, great question for our attorney to say, would you look at this to be sure we're right on this, because this is gonna come up again.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna happen.
Yeah, because there's a lot of weird stuff out there.
Okay.
I, I think I would run it by the attorney, that, but back to what you presented to us.
When was the lot created?
The one, the one that we're, that I'm working on here? This one?
Yeah.
Um. I thought that it was part of a subdivision, but I saw a subdivision for all of these lots and this one was already there, it looks like it's part of that same project, but it wasn't.
I wanna get.
So I don't know, I didn't, I didn't find it.
Look for the gene that created that.
Yeah, like a, like the one acre parcel under the question, if that was a s- separate lot. Yeah, at the time, it was subdivided, or at the time that whole subdivision was laid out, if that met the requirements. At that point in time, whose grandfather did.
Right, I think it had, it had to be before subdivision regulations. And I didn't see any record of a subdivision, I couldn't.
Cause you know, where if you go and look at that lot, if you zoom into the upper right there, Ryan, move your cursor over, go to the right. The other right.
You wanna move the map further?
Yeah, move it over a little more, a little more. Keep going, keep going, see that lot up there, that little pie shaped one, look too far, that one there, the set. The road frontage there is less than a hundred feet.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm just guessing, comparing the size of the other, so. If you measure her out.
About seventy eight meters. Those were, is part of the original subdivision that their grandfather did.
Yeah, I don't think you're coming up that hill there from that side though.
Right.
If I remember right.
Right. Speech of fall, we're gonna watch you do that, but regardless, it sits there.
Yeah.
And if that's a, that's a second law, and that doesn't have a, uh, residence on it, a, a residential in it, so something we're gonna be looking at that though and. Or maybe not us, but you will be.
Well, so the lot was laid out like that initially, it was approved.
And it's good.
Then it's built.
Yeah, I, so I don't think that it was laid out that way and approved by a subdivision regulation, I think it predated that.
So it's older stuff, people.
Well, if it predates subdivision regulations and its examples.
It's, yeah.
So, so I guess one of the, one of the things that I'd like to see in, in the next set of regulations is that exemption explicitly called out, because. It's confusing with it, having that clear exemption for the minimum lot size, but not for that other. Thing that we're supposed to review, but it doesn't make any sense to review because they're already existing. So on my checklist for permit applications, does it mean the minimum lot size, yes or no, doesn't really matter. The lot's there, it's there. So anyway, thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah, we just need to have the, the question or answer there to, to clarify that question on your checklist.
About the mechanic.
Yeah.
Of the language.
About, about the mechanics.
The merger, yeah.
Yeah, all of that, whether, yes.
Yeah.
Good questions.
Mm-hmm, all right, thank you, that's gonna be fun. All right, moving on to item number seven, plan adoption, the education chapter, see, we got some emails here. I'd love to know when you.
Yeah, um, so I reached out to BJ and asked her about, um. The changes that we had proposed, uh, I basically took all of Joe's comments and put them in track changes so she can see what's changed. Um, accepted everything that they had done in the first place and then our changes, sent those to them. Um, asked her about that one paragraph that we talked about, um, having to do with, uh, what's the?
The handout learning.
He's a learned guy. Um, so.
I think they respond to theirs.
Well, why the school won't set it out there, I mean.
Well, what was the question you asked? I didn't see what, what, what your question was, cause it feels like we're not communicating.
Well, I forgot to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
It's mine, right?
Yeah, sorry, I'm, um. No, that's, that's the other question.
Um, yeah, I guess you don't have the original.
Because I feel like we're not communicating on that.
Yeah.
Um. Cause for example, line one forty two. Yeah, cause I think the next section is kind of similar, the six points, the, their, their comment was like, we don't do this. But they also don't do adult education, do they, which is line one sixty nine.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's sort of like, should we take that out also, because.
And I think that's upsetting that they're taking that out of there, I mean.
Yeah, well, I think maybe we're not communicating well. Cause a lot of this was stuff that we, we, they, that we needed them to, like, they're the ones that are. You know, they know, they know about eighty percent of the, of the schooling in this town, they know about most of this, right, so they're. You know, in some ways they're a chapter, but also in some ways it's, that's mother thing.
So, so let me read the question that I asked BJ. I said, the planning commission reviewed the changes to the education chapter, I accepted all the changes you made, then added changes they discussed on Monday night. If you would take a look and see if there's anything you disagree with or think should be clarified, please let me know. And then I said, the main question they had for you is about the deletion on lines one thirty seven through one forty five at the time. They assumed it was removed because field trips and things aren't being done as much and they felt that the paragraph had a lot. Um, but they felt that the paragraph had a lot of value and it is in a section that is not necessarily specific to the Weatherfield School. Is there a reason that the paragraph, paragraph ought to be removed? Um, and that wasn't addressed specifically other than to say we still think it should be removed.
Um, but, but the six point four is non-classroom based education, so yes, that's not at the school.
Right.
And we understand that.
Right, so it feels like we're not communicating. There, I mean, they, I, I doubt they mean anything.
Well, I know in years past, there's a, you know, a fourth grade class that he used to take them down to the cemeteries, the. You know, the Dan Foster House, all these little field trip type things about, you know, local history. And for the last three or four years, they haven't done that at all, we got them up to the Dan Foster House, uh, three weeks ago. For a couple hours, that's the first time in four years they've done it. Cause they, for some reason, they just have taken that out of their programs altogether, I don't know why, I think it has a lot of value.
Um, the last half of this paragraph says, the, the town of Weatherfield desires to enhance the cooperation between the Weatherfield School. And area businesses that could sponsor place-based education opportunities for students. There should be, there should also be connections with civic groups and organizations that could bring. A greater community focus to class-based curriculum such as local history and geography. So I go back to the first part of that, it, it, where it talks about cooperation between the school and area, and, and area business. Do they not want to participate? Are they not interested, is that what they're saying, or what's?
Well, I think the kind of conversation we had last time was, it sounds like K through six. So it's, you know, high school, there's a real viable opportunity to have them, you know, to shout at people in business and all that, but. K through six, I'm not sure.
This is after, this comes after six point three is high school education, so this comes after, you know, so this, I don't feel like this is suggesting that the, that this is. Pertains to any school. Pertains to any school. Just, I mean. Part of it, part of it, I think, is, is. I've expressed interest by people in town, I think it's a good idea. I, but, and, and then partway through, it does bring in this, it does, you know, bring in the school, which. Might feel burdensome to them, I mean, I do see that.
I had a couple of thoughts, because, um, when I read this. And read in line one forty two, it involves taking children out of the classroom. And we're talking about young kids here. And placing them into apprenticeship style training programs that may be on farms, repair shops and other places that require skilled workforce. You know, the fourth graders aren't going to do that, shouldn't do that, and there'd be legal issues, so I. Feel like verbiage isn't the most accurate that it should be, but if you wanna say something about opportunities for. Students, lifelong students, but connecting the Weathersfield School and children out of the classroom to.
That, that whole sen- that whole sentence could come out and just leave it out, just that, just that part now.
It, it, and maybe split it into paragraphs, but then, take that sentence out and then have other two little short paragraphs instead of one.
Yeah, so.
Well, I like definitely changing the children to students, however, technically, if you're under eighteen, you're still a child. By law, cause you're not a legal adult.
However, there are opportunities at the high school level.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So.
And that's what I mean.
Completely before you impose students versus a fourth grader, you know, in the.
Yeah, we're asking people at the Weathersfield School about this, and they're, like, machine shop, I didn't think so.
Well, maybe students is a better word there.
Well, that's a, a really good catch on that one, um, I feel like, I've not only, you know, this. There's not just the Weathersfield School here in town, there's also people that are homeschooling, there are people that go to private schools. So we can't just look at the microcosm of the Weathersfield School, we have to look at everything, educational wise.
Right, I know a homeschool person who's doing apprenticeship with a very.
And like.
Your senior high school.
That's awesome. Maybe, maybe also, you know, with, with that sentence could say, this form of expert experiential education involves students. Rather than saying taking children, you know, taking students out of classrooms, just saying involve what it does involve. Cause, um, you know.
Yeah, I think you could skip, this form of, uh, experiential education involves apprenticeship style training programs. That may be on farms, repair shops, on the places that require a skilled workforce.
Yeah.
Done.
And then the next, the next paragraph, we could, or the next sentence, you could take out the, um. Town of Westfield desires to enhance the cooperation between the Weathersfield School, will you take the Weathersfield School out of it and say the school district? Or something that incorporates all the high schools and stuff that are in the surrounding area? With like cooperation beyond just whether, but.
Or just say it's a goal of the town to have, uh, the, the students somehow, I, I don't know.
Um, I think we do wanna try to, to make that connection. I think that there needs to be a third party to say, schools, like, the school world is kind of in its own space, and then private businesses. The town could take an active role, I don't know exactly, who within the town would do it, but.
Actually between education and businesses.
Right.
You don't have to say schools, you can say education.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it can be support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Between school, yeah, I like where we're heading.
Well, this is why we can't operate in a vacuum.
Okay, well, I can take a stab at reworking that one and try and keep what, what we're interested in keeping it resolved, the stuff they don't wanna see.
How about the rest of the stuff, how do they feel about it?
Um, they didn't have any comments on anything else that was added. Um, I asked if they just had some information readily available about how the structure of the, the supervisory union works. Um, BJ just sent me something off of their website, um, so that's added at line twenty two. Um, I might have changed just a couple of words in there to make it read right, um, but it didn't exactly get to. What Mike's point was, was about the structure and representation of the town.
Right.
Um, so we could still add more in there.
It seems like they're gonna get. Yeah, I didn't feel that that got to what we were, we were trying to ask, um.
So on, on that, Mike, do you want me to do the, the research and, and write it, or did you have something on, in your mind that you wanted?
Between one forty, one forty eight?
Um, just after, uh, number thirty.
Line thirty.
Line twenty two through thirty is where they talked a little bit about. The supervisory union in the town. Um, but we had talked about representation at, at the supervisory union. And so you had offered to write something up, but I asked BJ if she had something quick first. So I can write something, I just, I would have to do the research, cause I don't know exactly.
Okay, and, and BJ's, uh, stuff is before that, right, yeah, the, the, the discussion and the emails is before that.
Yeah.
This is, by the way, this might all change when the state votes on Act seventy three.
Could all change.
Boy, boy, that needs to fun, doesn't it? Uh, wh- when they say that seventy three is doing what to?
It's combining school districts, I believe, isn't it, Pam?
Yes.
But the supervisory rules probably won't change much, other than just the incorporation of larger districts, or who knows? Uh, we don't know on any of that? Great.
It seems like what's worth putting in, what you were going for, even if it changes, because. If we have nothing, no, no understanding now, a little, a little more might, I mean, a little bit. Might be something that we needs to be updated, there's a lot of things that kind of need to be updated.
The original education chapter had something like, as of two thousand fifteen or two thousand eight or whatever it is, when the supervisor union first took over. Maybe we should almost bring that back as in, it has been this for this long. But by the way, at the writing of this, we don't know, but this is in the pike of Act seventy three. And that may supersede it or something like that, just to kind of, a little CYA for the future.
Or a little notation like.
Yeah, it's like, hey, this is there.
The Act seventy three could die, and they could come up and call it something else.
They could.
Yeah, that's a challenge for doing that.
I, I think the one thing missing from twenty two through thirty here is, um. The, the S U comprises the, the four Vermont villages, uh, and town school districts, provide learning environment for students from PK to grade twelve. Um, educating students from Windsor, West Windsor, Harlem, Weathersfields, um. It, it, it describes the schools, uh, more than what, more so than what I was looking for here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what I was looking to get in here is the structure, um, that exists. Um. So you have four towns, Windsor, Hartland, Weathersfield and West Windsor, Windsor, West Windsor, Hartland, Weathersfield. Um, the supervisory union is, is this bureaucracy. And our representation to that bureaucracy is two members from each town's local school board. And I, I kinda wanted that somehow worked into this narrative. So that people understand what their representation is, uh, through the school board to the supervised reunion. Because remember that the whole discussion is about the fact that we don't get to vote on the supervised reunion budget. We only get to vote on the school budget, and those two people that are representatives. E- e- elected by our, that are on our school board, they're elected officials. But then the, the two people are elected from the school board to represent us at the SU. And that's our only representation, it's the only thing you get, that's all you get.
Definition of the, of the W S E S U in there, just so everybody knows. Just put, put in there that we get two votes, how, what is it, it's for, say, people.
Or some, something, some, something, something about that.
So I was offering either to do the research and write it up, or if you already know how it works, then you could write it down.
I didn't say it yet.
Okay, so, so I'm not, so I'll, I'll do some research, but I haven't looked into that before, so.
Okay, that's okay.
Because when I first read this, I didn't know that until after I looked it up, and then after we talked about it, I realized that we only have, so we could be voted against.
Right.
Or.
Well, and, and the point, some of the point was that their budget gets rolled into the school budget, which then gets voted on, so if we vote down our school, you know, so if they. If we don't like what they're doing, we have to vote down our whole, our school budget.
That entire SU budget is decided by those eight members.
Yeah.
Uh, that, 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 that are elected by East Town School Board.
So your point, Mike, is to let people know that that's how we get to where we end up at every year.
Yes.
I think that's a good idea.
The taxpayers have no input whatsoever, so.
You sort of do, but it's a long way.
It's a long way around here.
Um. I, I have a feeling that people would say no to an SU budget, long before they'd ever say no to a school budget. Yeah, we, we, we prize that school, we take care of our kids and, and, and our staff, um. Uh, but we need to get the look at the, at the SU budget, you know?
Well, we do, through our two members.
O- okay.
Yeah, they will come for us and.
I'm on two boards in this town, and I'm hardly familiar with anything that goes on over there, inside of it. Uh-huh, I'll be on the third one.
It was not that bad.
No. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I think your idea of adding a little definition in there of how the voting works, you could say that in one sentence, and everybody understands.
This.
Reads the town plan, what the heck's going on. The, the structure of the bureaucracy, I'm sad, cause I, I'm trying to avoid the term politics, because it's not really that.
Some stuff going on, I'm saying. We keep losing the image over there, defaults. If we wrap, if we, if we wrap the, the conversation, I noticed on line one seventy seven. Um, we mentioned Antioch University in Keene, and I wondered if, as, as offering a variety of undergraduates and graduate degree programs. And I wondered, the rest of the organs, the rest of the schooling that's mentioned in there. Significantly more local than that, and I wondered if there's a reason that that college, that university was. Uh, and, you know, I assume we don't know, and, but maybe somebody knows something about Antioch, I don't know much. But there's a bunch of colleges in, in, in the same radius, and Keene State College is in the same town.
Like the community college.
Yeah, which, well, the community college is, is mentioned as, as, as being in Springfield, and that kind of makes sense, that's very local. Um, you know, I just.
Yeah.
It just seems a little odd, seems like, I mean, maybe there's a specific reason.
Where in Keene is Antioch College, uh, is that the Keene State College?
No, no, it's, it's separate, different.
My reason for asking that is this, if I drive to the Harley dealership down there, it's sixty miles.
An hour.
Sixty miles round trip, yeah, no, sixty miles one way, one direction.
Well, it feels like it's less than a hour, but it's still.
Takes an hour.
Yeah, it takes an hour, sixty months, so if I went sixty miles north, couldn't I be pretty close to Cassifton too, couldn't I?
Well, D C, I mean, there's a, a number of, I mean, that's why I'm bringing up, let alone Dartmouth, let alone.
Yeah.
I mean, Keene State College is in the same town as Antioch, why is it, I don't know, so it just. I see, even I'm mentioning that the community college has, has, uh, a Springfield office, makes sense. Beyond that, it feels like maybe we should just drop that sentence.
So either strike it or say there are other opportunities.
Just break it.
Less than that, I would just strike it.
Yeah, we don't wanna start transferring all the colleges in.
I, I, I'd be surprised if there wasn't a community college in Clarence too.
Yeah, there is.
There is.
Yeah, there is, um, so, I don't know, drop that sentence, it seems simple.
Mm-hmm.
Unless, I mean, maybe there's a reason, maybe they do more like adult education or something, I don't know. But it just seems.
They study in the ox.
Right, that's. Uh, anyway, one eighty six, I also had a question, oh, um. We kind of, I think we kind of talked about one eighty six is objective one, um, we kind of talked about this before, but. We, it's, we kind of have a, a list, there, examples include so on and so forth, this is examples of non-classroom resources. Since we're listing, even though we say examples include, I kind of feel like the town forest should be on there. Um, like, I would put the town forest down before Hoysington Field, you know, I don't, not, not that Hoysington Field doesn't matter, but. Uh, we do end up kind of listing a lot of the more prominent, and I feel like the town forest. You know, as an underutilized thing, having it mentioned on that list would be not a big deal, and, and maybe worthwhile.
And who knows, the more it's mentioned inside the town plan, the more different opportunities for grants it has too.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
I know the library comes up in the objective, but why isn't it into the non-classroom?
And it does say examples, so it couldn't, I mean, like, Hoysington Field and the library both feel like so obvious.
Mm.
But, um, the town forest, cause it's underutilized, feels like, like it, like a worthy, you know, and I, maybe we should add more stuff. I'm always a little bit again, that when you're on the list, sometimes you, you know, sometimes you get a benefit grant, grant opportunity wise, whatever, so. I don't know.
Ryan, do you think it's just the splitter box is hanging over?
You mean this here?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I had to call IT this morning because my power cord wasn't plugged in. It was a pretty embarrassing. Pretty embarrassing. Was up a pretty much every hour. It's getting better, Ryan, keep working on it, that new cable. Oh, it's.
It's, that's, that's this one.
I work up pretty much every hour, so come on, it's, I feel like, you know.
Back to the education chapter.
Hank, um, we talked about the town forest and the Utopus and facilities chapter.
Yeah, no, I know that it comes up other places.
Yeah.
We shouldn't have talked this long, so anyway, we could be added or not, I don't know. Try not to bring these things up, to waste our time, but I don't know.
Well, education chapter is pretty short, I think we can afford a couple more words of it.
Mm-hmm.
As long as we keep it just in.
Town forest.
Should that come down to our famous semi-fold discussions?
Oh, no.
Uh, let's see here. Oh, yeah, for the education check.
So, I remember we had a discussion of the goals and the safety of securities, um. We had some questions about why certain things were, as a future plan, I can't remember the exact question that we had. But there was that one sentence that seemed like an afterthought after.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what we're addressing here in, uh, two oh two?
Right, uh, two oh two, so, um, there was, so they had, you know, education. Goals, and then they had recommendations, and so I reformatted that, and they really only had one goal. Um, so I added a couple more goals to reflect the objectives that were already talked about as recommendations. Um, and then in, on line two oh nine, is that future plans include improving school safety. I just reworked that whole sentence to try and make it work better.
Yeah, I like your wording better.
Short and simple.
Blows much easier, a little again.
That first line I took, yeah, and put it at two oh two, right.
Yep.
Getting there, I think we're almost ready for a clean copy, I'm still very hung up. At the, uh, uh, or the non-classroom stuff, I really personally feel like that needs to be in there.
Yeah. Good plan, I think, I think you'll make it right.
Yeah, so there'll be two new paragraphs, one on the representation and one on, uh, hands-on learning, base-based.
Yep. I, I wrote that sentence that I did down, but the next one I kind of lost somewhere, I just know that I wanted to get Weathersfield School out of there. So now just make it a little more generic.
Yeah.
You got it, you got this.
Post. Awesome.
Alright, moving on to economic development chapter, number eight on our agenda.
Okay, we had resolved to being just about ready for a clean copy, this is the, um, precursor to that, I suppose. Um, some minor changes, um, see. See. Line one is this, one sixty is where I added a new sentence. Or I guess I reworked that to try and make it.
Can I this time provide some feedback and be concerned some of the verbiage? And is this new or was this taken from twenty seventeen?
It's where you think there, there's, it's, there's a lot of new, there, there's some that came, came over.
Okay, so my concerns probably are a little bit related, but the first begins, um, with. Line fifty-eight. And. It's. Townspeople are averse to high-density, high-traffic commercial developments and the types of commercial development. That lead to increased crime rates and decreased property values. Can anybody explain? The definition and what are the legal businesses that might increase crime rates? I feel like you're going on a slippery slope to put this in. A town plan.
I think you, I think you're right.
This, this was language from, from the previous.
I wonder if that has to do.
Fifty-nine.
The old, um.
We're fifty-eight.
Uh, the, the storm is up on.
The only thing I can think of is a, uh, I don't know, it's a fair analogy, okay, let's. Try it in. Um, remember the permit that came up for the, um, yeah, that's the only one I can think of.
And yet, if a business is legal and it meets all these zoning bylaws.
You gotta give them a permit.
It's, it's development, it's not behavior. We might not like behavior, but that's not part of zoning. No, I agree with you completely.
I just think that should be taken out.
Well, because you don't really define. Types of commercial development. That lead to increased crime rates and decreased property.
Exactly, who knows?
So what could that be, a strip club? A casino, well casinos aren't permitted.
I bet I knew it, if this is from, this came over from back before twenty seventeen. I bet it had to do with the drive-in that used to be over here.
Yeah, could be very old language.
There, where, where, um.
The Mormon church.
Where the Mormon church is, that used to be a drive-in. And it turned into a porn. Drive-in.
You have a regulation, so if someone came in and, and asked for a zoning permit for a drive-in movie theater. We don't prohibit them.
Doing some point. Same thing with strip clubs, you.
You, they don't.
By law, you can eliminate it, but you gotta find a place to put it, you could stay in an industrial zone somewhere outskirts of town, but.
I, I lived through a zoning seminar years ago, who, dude, I think it's Nugin was his name, was the judge that was there that day from the E Court. When a town writes a bylaw or a language that, that prohibits some type of business. Somebody comes in and wants to do that business.
Right, it's cool.
When it goes through the E Court, they're gonna get their business.
Right, because you can't prohibit it.
You, you can, you can say you can't have it here, you can't have it here, here's space over here where you can do that.
So what we're saying is if we take this out. And we don't want certain types of businesses in certain areas, we need to write a bylaw that says that, that's what we're talking about, correct?
Yeah, violation that it should come out, I just assumed nobody complained about it yet.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It's one of those things nobody wants to address, because as soon as you start mentioning strip clubs or something, then somebody says, oh, gee, I can do that.
And, yeah, I think as soon as there's a zoning application that neighbors who are concerned are gonna come speak out about, they're concerned about lower. Property values or.
What if we, what if we change the end of the sentence? Townspeople are averse to high-density, high-traffic commercial developments and the types of commercial development that lead to a change. In the rural nature of. The town of Weatherfield, or something like that.
But the last sentence, I think, also encapsulates the type of economic development and its social and aesthetic. Impact is a primary concern to the town, both as individuals and as a municipality. You keep that and also.
Really, when you end the end of the first sentence in line fifty-eight of the natural beauty or rural character of the town. That kind of encompasses everything else that's.
And then just end it there.
Just leaves everything else.
I think it's serious edit.
And then any kind of something that comes up to your point of things to be addressed. Will address it in the location that it's addressed at.
Because if, if someone comes in for a zoning permit, or they come to a DRB meeting for, for a use we don't want, the room should be packed.
Exactly.
Well, that's your classic opportunity for interim bylaw.
Right.
Um, and then.
So, so what's the board's consensus, should we strike those last two sentences? Is that what we resolved?
No, no. Not strike, townspeople are averse to high-density, high-traffic commercial developments. And the types of commercial development that lead to H, to a change in the rural. Character or nature of the town, Weatherfield.
Okay.
Period.
Is that what everyone else?
But don't we say that already, Mike, on the, on the, if you start meeting, uh. Part of fifty-seven, ending on fifty-eight, it says that do not detract from the town's natural beauty or rural character. So then I think you just strike the last two and we're done.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I'm okay with that too. Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a good idea, but.
Yeah, but it's, it's just redundant, right, if you could say it again.
And then my other one.
Thank you.
Now I'm just, so I'm starting, um, discussion here. Um, drop to line eighty-five. And I kind of think that whole paragraph could. And should potentially. Be deleted.
Well, because.
It's a bit of an editorial. Kind of judgy, talk about newer, wealthier people coming from better economic environments, often in search of a more rural, pleasant place to live.
Jesus.
Yeah, so you, I have.
God, I didn't see this.
I, I had flagged that. First sentence, because I really was, uh, very taken back by. Nine eighty-six attracting people who pay for the ever shrinking available rural land, that's all, that's discriminatory.
The whole paragraph. Has no value.
I have no problem, I, I'm point, I have no problem with it. I think that, that should disappear.
Dave will be so happy when I go home and say, I'm gonna make happen do.
It's a slash something. So eighty-five through ninety-two, we're just.
The only part of this that I had a question about for everyone tonight were, um. The last, after the comma at the end of eighty, ninety-one. Um, often in search for a more rural and pleasant place to live of a higher tolerance for density. And we've been talking about increasing density in the villages, so maybe that needs to move over towards the. Towards the village cate- category, because that's where the growth should be in the areas we identify.
Right.
But the rest of that, that is.
I think you got, but the village category, I think addresses what we wanted to address, so.
We do talk about higher density, but I just, when I read that, I struck everything except that last after the comma. Thinking that we needed just to be sure we were inclusive in the villages.
Yeah. I think the, the purpose of that after the comma part of the sentence is, is to suggest that. People's definition of, of what rural is, is, is based on where they're coming from. Not, not that they are gonna, it doesn't mean that they're gonna wanna live in the village, it's gonna, it means that they're gonna be really happy to have ten acres. And some trees between them and their neighbor, and that'll be rural. But again, if you're coming out.
Five acres or three acres long, there's a few trees, it's rural.
I'll take it to an even more extreme, if you're coming out of New York City and you say you moved to downtown Newport. That's rural compared to New York City, sure.
It's all context.
Yeah, but then they're moving to Newport. I was using. Yeah, yeah.
Knock on my hometown.
So I think this, that paragraph is trying to describe what is happening. And so frequenting people, that's sort of the trend is to live in a place of high density. It changes, it gets more dense, you move to a lower dense area, but you're part of the, the increasing density in that area. So no matter if you're moving from Boston to Weatherfield, it's gonna feel like a rural move, but if you move from Weatherfield to rural Maine, it'll feel like a rural move. But either way, the people who are there see the population increasing, the number of parcels going up and getting smaller. Regardless of where your starting point is, that's sort of the, the trend, so the tolerance for density. Um, you know, is held by the people who are coming from a higher density.
And the part about the economics is, is not necessarily trying to. The, I think the, the, the economic part of the paragraph is saying. You know, some people are moving here because they got a job somewhere, but. We're already talking about the complexities of the economy of Weatherfield.
It's still an editorial.
Totally, it, it, it is editorial, I'm not sure it could be said in other ways. But it is also talking about. What's going on.
But is that? Part of a guidance document?
It doesn't feel real appropriate.
Right.
I agree.
I think, I think, yeah, I certainly believe it's a trend, but does it belong in the town plan?
No. Well, the previous paragraph is probably pretty good. It just says the same thing without having a whole bunch of opinion behind it.
I think we strike eighty-five through, not end of ninety-two and be done with it.
I'm okay with it.
That's unanimous across them, okay?
Okay, that's it for me.
That's all, come on, come on, you're doing such.
Come on, we got two more chapters we gotta do tonight.
I have. We can still have fun, one sixty-six.
One sixty-six, Hank?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The town should work with businesses and then there's a bit, a red bit scratched out and. I think the way it reads now. Might be okay, or maybe that too should be undeleted. The town should work with business. Businesses. The town should work with businesses to understand, I. Right, well, businesses understand their needs, maybe needs a comma, understand their needs. And just assess the value of, I don't know, I guess the two. Should come.
I think, I think two, yeah, leave two.
One sixty-five. Oh, what? One sixty-four and down to one sixty-five, okay, what did I want to have on here? Oh, the, the, that, um, red, talking about industrial, how commercial industrial residents these areas should be aware of the different. Standards that apply, um.
Yes.
It's. Uh, we talked about this, this is why I kind of, I asked for this, it feels a, a little harsh, but I guess. I'm not sure if.
I think it is a direct reality.
Yeah, right.
And we takes precedence over the residential.
And we talked about the dynamic of either people built. Next to a sawmill, next to an industrial site, where they fought next to it, either way, it was there. So, yeah. Let's, let's. Talk about making the residential property, uh, residential development. Special exception or initial issues in the, like a commercial.
Yes.
To inform people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Formally.
You gotta have the business structure, and then you can have the house, and then, and, 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 and we actually, we faced that, one of our last things we looked at. As, as a planning commission in, uh. Uh, subdivision, what, um, the, the guy wanted to sell the store. Right, and, and it didn't work out.
Right.
I mean, he did, he finally, he sold the store, but he wanted to separate the house from the store.
Yeah.
And, and, but that was creating. Back to our first discussion, uh, they were non-conforming lots and it made them more non-conforming, and you can't do that.
The only thing I hated about that is it came down to two feet or something like that.
Yeah.
But you're right, though, is the lot.
But it was non-conforming and to separate it made it more non-conforming.
Right, I would have made a lot more money to sell the house separately.
I think he wanted to stay in the house.
No, he rented the house, rented it, but that's all the tracks of work. Right. All right, so now we're down to the interchange corridor section of this, one eighty-two through one eighty-five. That just has a little statement that we had about the wastewater in there. And the limitations of that, that. That was from our last discussion, right, Ryan?
Actually, more. You're so kind. Um, so line one seventy-three is one of the places where they're referring to a twenty-ten public outreach meeting. Doesn't that seem a little bit like?
One seventy-three. Not, not really.
With anything?
Were you here in, were you here in two, twenty-ten?
Yeah.
We, um, that's when we went through the, um. Uh, petitions to remove zoning.
Oh, yeah, oh.
So there were five actual meetings all over, that, that were held in the, i- i- five distinct places in town. And, and that's a really important message that came out of those meetings. Uh, it's probably the most communication we've had, even to this day. Uh, with, with the people.
Oh, I, I do remember that well.
Yeah.
The impact in our household too.
It's almost like a historical mark.
Date, go, Branson was on, like. There was a petition that the downer stored about getting rid of zoning and it even referenced it.
It did.
Oh, yeah, he was.
Not in, not in the, not in the, uh.
In the petition. Because. Get rid of zoning.
I don't remember.
Guy right across the street, isn't that the same time?
I'm sorry, I say that again.
The storage unit guy right across the street there, he had a big banner.
It, yeah.
Yeah, that all had to do.
Spur.
Yeah, all to do with getting rid of zoning.
Yeah, getting rid of zoning, not getting rid of David Branson.
Well, he was named.
I don't recall, I don't, anyway, I don't, yeah, I don't recall any names being put in the petition.
Yeah, he was, actually.
Huh, I'll, I'll see if I can find that, because I was prior to that and prior to drafting that petition, I don't re, I don't recall putting anybody's name in a petition. Because it wouldn't have anything to do with anybody in particular.
Um, so, at least you can understand, it just seems to me a little bit.
Outdated.
Yeah, I, we tried to do a survey and reach people and the response was really poor.
There's only one way to get people in here. So, stir up off.
So the other place that has a date that seems kind of old would be describing present economic conditions.
Where?
At line twenty-two.
What line?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and two point one, present economic conditions. And the last part says a twenty-twelve inventory of businesses in the town, and so it gives numbers of businesses from twenty-twelve. I don't think that describes present.
Um. You, you know, it's difficult in a small town like this to, to, to look at these numbers. And to keep up with them, but you can go back to nineteen seventy-two and we've added exactly one mile of road. To, to the town since nineteen seventy-two. So sometimes things don't change much. Um. And if I had to look at it, I'd probably say, if anything, the numbers are down from that. At this point. Just a guess.
And again, you know, it's up to you as the planning commission, I'm just giving feedback as a rather breathing. Day.
It's, it's an interesting, um. It's like twenty-ten and twenty-forty, I feel like, kind of feel like yesterday. In terms of how this works to me, but, uh, if I was reading this, I would agree with you. Um, it's kind of an interesting difference in.
The objective, whether at value of town plan, and that's partially why I asked if this was new or. Came from twenty-seventeen and it'd be old verbiage that was just sitting there.
I think what it does for me when I read it is, it's, it's, I guess surprisingly high the number of businesses, I wouldn't have guessed a hundred if. You know, if, when I first started out and first moved to town, um, it sort of feels like there's. Five stores you drive by and there's a gas station on that side of the town, but there's a, a lot more than what you see.
That's a big question, what kind of counter is a business? But.
After twenty-twelve. Um. DeForest was zoning, zoning administrator and, um, Julia Lloyd Wright was an ex-official member. And, and am I wrong, DeForest, the, the two of you actually did this report, or am I making stuff up?
Um, sorry, I don't know, I don't remember.
I, 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 because I thought Julia, uh, was, it, it just comes into my. I I I, because I thought Julia uh was, it it just comes into my mind that that she was. She wanted to point out how much business we had in town and so she. I think it was her that actually brought the list in, I thought that she might have been working with you somewhat, uh, DeForest at that time.
They, I think they had a Weatherfield Business Directory at that time too, which was, you know, maintained enough kept so they could rely on that.
Yeah, now now that you've mentioned it, Linisty, I think had had something to do with that, which by the way, Lynn just passed recently.
So it is updated, but it's the best data that we have. We could just get rid of it, but I don't think we can update it in time for this. Wasn't, wasn't there a um? Effort or pretty recent effort that um, I don't. Yeah, the Conservation Commission went through and took the twenty-seventeen directory and went through and called a bunch of businesses. Um, and tried to put together a an updated one, but um. I wouldn't feel comfortable in using that as data, because I think there's probably a lot that aren't in there that we can get phone calls.
I mean, a lot of the word there are no longer in operation. They look, a good number of closed down, but like you said.
It would be interesting for a discussion, but I wouldn't want to put that in.
Sure. I think maybe, I mean, get ready for something in the future will be.
I mean, I I I agree with you in saying, gee, that looks old, but in light of, because I know when I updated the airport information, it was easy. I emailed the Director of Aviation in the state of Vermont and said, what are the takeoff and landings and what's the basis of all, and it gave me all the stats. But this is, this would be quite an effort to do, but maybe it's a place where this will stimulate someone to say, hey, that was seventeen years ago. We need to do a survey.
We could put an objective in here for uh gathering better.
This cer- the survey should be updated. And there you go. And it's a goal, because if it's not in there as a goal, then. Because there might actually even be funding available for that, but if it doesn't say it in the town plan. Uh. And that's part of the reason why we add the goals is we're applying for funding, as Hank points out to us all the time, that he looks at town plans. And if whatever the application is, isn't in the town plan, he goes, nope, doesn't check that. But I mean, maybe that's a simplistic, but if it's not in the town.
No, yes, yeah.
So I think let's just add one sentence saying, we we had a goal to update the business in the party.
Right, any other comments on the uh Economic Development Chapter? And if we if we didn't close out the discussion of the twenty-ten thing, I think that was a big enough. Situation that it should remain. I've perhaps even get get like discussed a little, I mean, that was a pretty big. I don't know. So. Moving on to the Utilities and Facilities Chapter. Number nine. New maps?
Oh, yeah, um, I added a map today.
Thank you.
If you didn't see it um earlier.
It was added in the last minute.
It looks like SpongeBob. So everybody understands the the reason for the map, that this is all related back to the whole cell phone discussion, because when I talked to Annette, she said if you don't identify. The ridge lines, you can't exclude ridge lines. It's too arbitrary, you have to say these are ridge lines that we don't want cell phone town or something, so that's the discussion. And then we need to reference the map and the language, which I can do, now that we had this map, it'd be nice if. I don't know if the ridge lines are named.
Yeah, a a lot of them are, other ones I just. Just for adding the data, I just put the current landowner or something.
Okay.
Um. But yeah, we can identify them, um. So this is basically, um. By using Google Map Street View going along. One oh, one oh six, one thirty-one, Route five, Weatherfield Center Road. I didn't do the interstate, um, but that probably could be done, I think you probably wouldn't add all that much new new stuff, but. Um, basically, anywhere that there was a prominent high point where um. Where it's just the sky in the background, where a tower would be very obvious. There are other places where there's a ridge line, but there's sort of trees mixed around and it and it wouldn't be so.
This isn't based on like a certain elevation.
No, yeah, this is based on what could be seen from those. Um, and also that's to say that there's other places that aren't so much ridge lines that would still. If a tower was placed, there would be pretty prominent.
But it'd be hard to exclude everything, because the goal here is we want to encourage cellphone, a cell tower development, but then in a sensitive and careful way.
And there could be ones on here that are shown that might be good locations for towers too, um, like. Butterfield Hill, which is, um. Yeah, nothing's labeled, but it's in the in the south, it's. Three blobs from the left. That is the only place where that was visible was from one oh six and it's a pretty good distance from one oh six and it's. Sort of a brief look at it, um, so that's on there. And not differentiated from like Hawks Mountain, which is a lot more prominent and um.
And that currently has an airport beacon located on it that's not functional.
Uh-huh, oh, I should have put the other beacons on there.
It's not turned on, they've turned those all off.
Really?
Yep, except for the one on the west side of the airport, all the other uh terrain-based um. Beacons have been turned off because the theory from the aviation department is that all airplanes now have GPS mapping that denotes the terrain. Which is not a correct statement, so I don't think that's a very safe move, but that was the decision of the state to not.
We already have one plane crash on Hawks Mountain.
I was gonna go the other way, I was gonna say, we've never had a plane crash in Weatherfield.
Actually, uh, one of, uh, back in the day, an ultralight fell right in our field.
Uh, the big one was up on Hawks Mountain.
Right, well, this was a little smaller, but also a lot, it's more recent, yeah, I would see like a nine or better.
Maybe twenty-nine. So Ryan, your your point is that that beacon located on Butterfield Hill is not that visible and would be a good location for a cell tower?
Right, there could be a couple that are shown as red here, because I didn't differentiate between them, but that might be good potential locations.
So we, but what we could do is just call out the ones we don't want them on. And then. From there. Right. The world figures out what it wants to do. Right, I mean, there's still a lot of open ground here, it's not like there's a big ground launch across the whole town.
Right, there's a lot of.
So so the whole section at the top. Is is a no. That's, that's a Scotty, that's the town for.
A Scotty and Little Scotty.
Yep. Okay.
And there are towers, alright.
After the ever, already, yes. Uh, Hawks Mountain, which is the big one on the left.
Yeah.
That's out.
Yeah.
And then what?
Just north of Hawks Mountain, there's two smaller ones, that's Eagles Head. Um, I think that that's pretty prominent from the Downers area, um. It's also listed as a natural biological natural area in the.
Okay.
In that report, um. And then to the south of that, in that same region, that's also, that's a shoulder of Hawks Mountain, um.
Yeah, that's the one that's behind me.
Right, that's mostly visible going south on one oh six, looking up, you got the wetland, that's sort of over the view of it.
Right, but 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 the. That's Baltimore, a lot of that up in there is Baltimore.
Right, so I just drew the line just to the Weatherfield boundary.
Um.
Is there a reason not to just call it good map, good job, Ryan, and move on?
Well, do. Okay, you don't want anything on any of the ridge lines?
I mean, I don't, I didn't look at the how prominent they are, I have no idea, you know, right, like I didn't do any research here, so. Seeing the map is just, I mean, I. Some of these places I do know and some of them I don't, and.
So maybe for a future meeting.
Time to.
Yeah, at a future meeting, I could run, maybe I could slim it down a little bit and we could run through the Google, Google Street View and just sort of like see it. And then you'd be able to.
Did you um physically drive any of this?
Um, I've been driving and thinking about it, but I just did this today, um.
Well, well, Ryan, for for me, I I. Like what we just got done talking about, you don't need pictures or images of any of that, like that that already makes sense to me to to not do. So it's just kind of like some of the other stuff.
Yeah, I could, I could call out a few that I think.
I think it's more minor stuff than anything. Right, I think conceptually we're close, with the exception of any of some names on these things are the property owner, there isn't a name. Yeah. One, two, three, four, five.
I would say. If you could run us through some of the less prominent ones, you know, like probably the top half of them, we don't even need to look at. But it, but the ones that that you think are a little bit less prominent, maybe it is worth looking at closer together. I would just say, you know, nice map, let's move along, but. Um. You know, to your.
Well, so what's the end goal too, we want to have a map that we're gonna include in the town plan?
We either, neither, either have to have a map or we need to have a description with names on it, I think having the map with the names.
Yeah, I agree.
Black and white. Twenty-three, twenty-three or twenty-four little blobs, it's tough to count them all, they're kind of moving. But there's twenty-three or twenty-four little blobs on here. Yep. Uh, if you made a list, that's a pretty long list. Um, that's why I, I, you know, if we just. Call out the ones we really don't want stuff on. We may, you may decide after really looking at this, that some of the smaller blobs go away.
Yeah, yeah, just as like an objective outside look at it, I would see all these big ones, they make a lot of sense, and just those small ones, it's like, well, why?
So the the flip side of that is some of the bigger ones, you could probably put a tower on there in a way that it's not really. Crucible. Um, the smaller ones might be locations where that's just a little hill, where that's gonna stand out like a cell phone. There's not really a good way to hide it.
So the next point with this was that this gives us control, if someone says, I want to put a tower on that ridge line, I know it's prohibited, but the location we're. We're proposing to you, I can show to you that you won't see it and you you won't be visually impacted in a very high degree. Her point was, you want to put something in there, they may still propose it on a ridge line, but at least this gives you the opportunity to say, hey, it says no.
If they proposed and we said, go ahead, that would be fine with me, which is one reason, meaning that would also just.
Right.
It should do a lot less work.
Yes, I don't see these locations as prohibited zones as much as if it's going to be in these areas, then they need to meet the standards so that it doesn't.
Exactly, yeah, and I think this was a great first start here, this is the same big. I I, yeah, I was just trying to narrow down how much floor he's got to do. It's been, I've been working on this for three months, so. Yeah, yeah, well, we, we're getting there, where?
I'm I'm, in case not there, I'm comfortable with whatever, you know, if if there's, if we want to spend. An hour looking at pictures, that's fine with me, but I'm also happy to just.
And for me, I would rather just say, you know what, we put a lot of time into this thing, let's name this thing and move on here.
Yep.
And if someone comes with an application and wants to put it on that small blob in the middle of the lower part of the map, the Hatton Company proved us that it's okay.
Yeah, and also one thing with the smaller blobs is it seems like there's potential, well, anyway.
What?
But no, I'm, I'm. I mean, it just seems like the smaller the blob, the more potential there is for something around the edge that makes sense. For everybody, but I'm not a technology.
Typically, the smaller blobs are where the terrain pops up very quickly and goes back down.
Which makes it harder to, anyway, so I wasn't gonna say anything, but, um. But also. If you're not comfortable with this plan, I.
Oh, no, I, I'm, no.
Great.
I'm reading.
Great, I just, I just didn't want to like, you know, move on from this, we should go more.
Oh, no, I think we're good. I think we're good.
Alright, got that into the verbiage.
Okay, so then the next thing that uh. At the eleventh hour this evening, line forty-four. The town well, I finally got response back from Suzanne and Brandon, I don't know, Brian, if you were copying on some of that back and forth. But apparently what's going on there is that. Not sure if we have a signed lease, but apparently Mr. Cohen is being billed for the well on a quarterly basis on the well when the water district builds. That's what I was told tonight or this afternoon. I don't know if we, I still don't have a copy of the signed lease, but I've been asking for it, it'd be nice to have that, but. Suzanne says he's being billed through the Water District for the use of the well. I don't know if we just want to say that in there and let it go with that. Well, I don't know if we need to get personal to that level in the town plan. Right, we could just say there's a well there and it's and the user's being billed for its use. I don't think we need to even say that. Well, um, there's a well there. And and it's John, uh, okay, it's. So we take coming out of that. Yeah, yeah, do we even need it in it? Yeah, no. Is that really relevant? No, it's not, I don't know, we sort of ended up there because that's how the discussions. Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's good context to know that the well's there and it's being used, like it's working, it's not just not much.
Yeah, so maybe we just simplify that and say it's on a deep metal farm and it's currently being used.
We can get rid of the lease and his name.
Yeah, get rid of all that stuff.
It's actually, it's kind of good to know that the farm is running water through it.
Yes, yes. Yes, I agree. But the rest of it's all personal stuff that really. It really shouldn't be a lab. Right. Um, and then if you move down. Um. Through from fifty-two down through eighty-seven, Mike, I edit your at the bottom of. Eighty-five there, the the needs of the town villages, we talked about the water, the study last time. Yes, and you came up with that language, I tweaked that slightly and stuck that in there. Most. So that kind of talks about the future, once we find out what the plan is, and then, um. What else? And crossing from one day to so many for so long.
The paragraph, um, seventy-eight to eighty-two.
Seventy-eight, okay.
The, I guess the last sentence on eighty-one, in addition, many of Perkinsville and Ascotney septic systems are aging and have little room for replacement or expanded systems. Um, it kind of just piqued my curiosity and I'd be interested to have that scenario played out a little bit further. So once these systems go. What what happens and how does that?
They have, if you have a a lot where you have failed septic systems, is the worst case scenario. That I've been involved in, they come in. And so you got a quarter acre lot, you got a little septic system, it's a small house, they dig out all the old stuff. And they rebuild and put a different, the newer technology, and I'm thinking a lot of the systems that have failed probably at grade. So put in what's called a press B or one of those other high efficiency systems. You got to get in the septic system, you can't say no, you can't have a septic and you got to move out, so you're kind of. It's a really difficult situation, but you can rehab old s- systems, it's just really difficult to do.
Costly.
It is costly, because you got to essentially excavate everything that was there, you get it out of there, get it disposed.
And dispose of it.
And dispose of it properly, and then you come in and rebuild on top of it, and so it's a mound system. So it's above the grade and then they build the the strata that makes the system work. Which I don't really quite understand the whole concept of being above, you know, a mound. Well, you're you're making a solid profile. And so the theory is part of it goes through evaporation, because you notice on the press B systems, they got the really tall pipe, it's like eleven feet, it allows to create. Um, circulation and air movement, help with the evaporation of the of the liquids that are in there. That's really the science, and that's about as much as I know, you have to go to a higher level of authority for an answer for that, but. Um, that's sort of the solution for that.
So from a planning first perspective, I think it's important to to understand that and that the. There that cost barrier is going to prohibit a a people from actually doing that.
It's like do building a brand new septic system with the added cost of disposing whatever. Fluid contaminated sources, and I don't know what that cost is for that. I don't think it's. You know, I I don't know what that could be, usually they was, they were built with pipe and rock.
You know.
And the systems just get plugged up with sludge, you know. You're gonna load that stuff out, off it goes, through a treatment center or a landfill that takes that. It's a tough situation, you're right.
Well, so it might be, uh, I don't, it's it's mentioned throughout here, but that might be. The time to bring up, um, municipal sewer systems, when all of these fail and it's not feasible for everyone to replace their. Things, maybe that's the. The the trigger that.
Fail on their own time.
The other issue too is that the state keeps increasing the separation distance between well and septic, so you may. Go and put a new septic system in, but now you're no longer meeting state.
Well, that's, that's a really good point, Howard, because it's, uh, the the thing is, is. M- most of those houses and stuff in the villages, all those wells and septic systems currently exist.
Right.
If you have to rebuild a septic system, it has to be rebuilt to current standards, not, there is no grandfather of this.
Yeah, you know, you have an exemption.
You don't, there's no exemption, there's no grandfather, you have to build it to the new standard, which means if there's a well within two hundred feet. Which, what are you gonna do? When typically they issue a waiver for that, to my understanding. They they are, yeah. Because you have, you have no other choice, if you're living in your house. And your septic fails. It's been that way before.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, I'll find out next couple of days about that. Because I, I think the, when they changed it to two hundred feet. Um, but what are you gonna do if you, if you and I live next door to each other and my septic fails and your well's a hundred feet from my septic?
I know.
I guess I'm coming over to visit you.
I didn't write that.
I, it's state, I guess, just arbitrarily said two hundred feet.
Yes.
Uh.
Which is the current.
It varies dramatically because of soils. Because what they're looking for is something like a fifty day travel time. Between a septic system and the well for the bacteria to have all died off before it's actually. And if you've got bank run gravel, that could be six hundred feet. I mean, it can travel twenty feet a day. But if you've got clay. Take two months to get fifty feet, so you know, you've got. I think that if you can't meet the two hundred feet, you gotta get an engineer in there to look at the soils you have. And so you get to some other way that you can safely.
Well, you have to do that anyway. You have to get an engineer, or septic designer to design.
So there was a property I was managing down in Dover that had experienced a massive septic failure out there. And everything about the property was just horrible, like getting it repaired. Um, we were working through, uh, Brian Rabinati. With this, and he came up with these tanks that I had never seen before. They were similar to this, Brian. They're like the, the leaf fields that are all in a tank.
Right.
Something like that, some can of company makes them or something like that, and they were like.
It's like the mini septic.
Yeah, the septic, you know, I can't remember the name of it for the life of me. But I'm like, what is this? And I went down that rabbit hole. And I learned so much about the newer systems and the way of treating things in these smaller profiles. And I'm like, boy, this is a really good solution for the, the Perkinsville stuff.
Well, the best solution was if somehow you could get sewer and water. That would be the best solution, but.
So that's the whole municipality thing for a couple houses.
So is there some way that we could, uh, point out, quote, newer technology?
Absolutely put that in.
Yeah. Thing I've always been curious too is you have a lot of these, you know. Homes out on small islands too. You're not getting a truck out there and pump that. And they have.
That's a whole other.
I'm aware. It, it finds its way.
Alright, so I'll add some language in there about new technology for treating difficult sites or something, and I'll check on the. Uh, refurbishment of the systems and try to get an answer for that to the next. Hopeful final round here of this.
Real happy with where this is at, um, personally, uh, not that that means anything. But yeah, keep it, keep short, Brian. It doesn't have to be like, you know.
And then the only other thing was if we. And believe me, we can back up, but back in, we had two thirty-seven for the ridge lines. We have that taken care of. I'll change that to reference the map. And maybe on the map, you could put a little key and list the ridge lines or something. I don't know how that would work best.
So a lot of them had names because they're already named on the USGS map. Naming is a very controversial thing, as I've kind of understand. How should I label some of these?
Well, you could just label them with the blob and call them area of the bridge line number one too, but I'm not sure that would be a real good description of that.
These coordinates, how many of them need names?
Um, probably half.
Just use the, can you just use the landowner's name?
Yeah, the landowners, some of them are businesses, like there's the ridge behind Getaway Mountain that sort of like is the high point and it sort of blocks the highway. There's a ridge that whole way, so I just call it Getaway Ridge or something.
Well, what about ridge attached to parcel two, two, three, four, eight, six, four, something like that?
I mean, you could just try to identify with the map and say, you're the problem originally, cause you could snap it to the parcels easily, right?
And that's what they're gonna go by if they're looking at the site, it's just. Map. Based, so.
Yeah.
I would think to just matching this.
Because you pulled this up on a, on which site did you use to draw the map?
Um, it's QGIS.
Okay, so someone that, you can give them a copy of that digitally and you could see the.
Name the ones that you, that have names and then number the rest of them, all that. Alright, it's really nice to be able to refer to things instead of. No?
Yes.
Cause we just tried to have a conversation about blobs and third blobs in the left.
I, I think we'll get. I think we'll.
That's fine with me. They can be the third blob, but it just needs to be labeled.
We've gotten halfway there. And try our best, and if it turns out to be a problem, we always go back and fix it later. Cause you know, we've just been spending a lot of time on this, so I'm not trying to not do that, but I'm just, this is really. And then the, the more important things as we get towards the end, the, uh, policies and goals here. Uh, I know, Ryan, you went through this already.
Um, the goals and policies, I haven't touched it yet.
Okay. So what I was gonna suggest, if, um, everybody's okay with this. We try to get Cliff to do a clean copy for the next meeting and then discuss the goals and policies. The policies and goals.
Right, great.
And then the two forty-eight procedures, which are pretty much the same, that really hasn't changed much. We just have to ensure two forty-eight A's in there. I think I did add that. And then the only other thing was the implementation matrix. I forget where we, what we decided to do with that. I'm sorry, what was that?
Get rid of it.
That's what I think we ought to, I think it just confuses things here, because this thing is gonna change over the next seven years. We talk about all these things in the different sections. I think we pull it out. Everybody agrees.
Yep, I agree.
I think it's, you know, when it comes to the entire town plan, we need some kind of a matrix on this, just the what. Who's responsible for certain things in the plan, which is. Something that I know before, so I've been looking at, thought we should have.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Uh, I think in, in this chapter, it just.
Don't you agree, Howard? Um, I don't know. That, that's all I have for this evening, that is.
Can I ask a question about the septic stuff?
Yes, sir.
Perkinsville, um. So part of the, is the study that's being done, is that for both Ascutney and Perkinsville or just one or the other?
What study?
Those. It's both. Is that going to look at, um, so. One option is. Septic system for the whole area. Another is.
All possibilities.
So if it's going to look at a communal system, would they go through the whole process of identifying? These are five parcels that are close together and they could use a shared system. Their systems are all aged, you know, similarly. That this is a feasible community system.
That's one of the first things they did.
So they've already done that?
That was one of the first things they did.
But have they done it for the whole area?
No, for, for each.
They just took an example?
Well, what they had to do was first identify where those sites were. And then who owned it, and they go speak to the owners. And when they got done with that, there wasn't a whole lot left.
Okay.
That's how that kind of went.
Okay.
And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand it is, oh, there, he said they're also going to talk about new technology.
Yes, yes.
So some of these things that you were talking about, sort of at these intervals, sort of mini. By people's sewer plants is one of the many options.
Wait, so you said that they reached out, they identified those places where they could have a communal system. And then they reached out to those landowners who have the site for the system?
That's, that, they started with the site. They, 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 they looked at the maps and, 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 and went out and identified the sites. And then they contacted the, that was part of phase.
And then if those landowners weren't interested, they're not gonna be part of the plan at all?
Well, it's.
For those sites, will they still be monumented in the, like documented in them?
Yeah, I, I think they'll still be talked about, but they're not, they're not feasible. Because, because of the.
For the current, for the current, current ownership.
Lack of cooperation.
Okay. But still, just knowing where the site is is important.
Yeah, that, that stuff, they kinda know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but will it stay in plan?
I, I. I don't know yet. Phase one, phase two, phase three.
I mean, it seems like a lot of working useful information to just get rid of because the current ownership, cause the ownership could change next year.
I, I'm not one of the engineers writing the documents, so I don't know what's actually gonna be in it. Uh, I mean, we certainly would be able to request that from the select board level, that we, that we want all that data retained.
Well, I even, even without reaching out to people, it would be interesting to see where a, a group of known. Old aging systems are, um, to just be able to say, here's, uh. A place where a community system could theoretically support. Don't even ask people about it and just say, this is.
The problem is gonna be, remain the same development wise forever. And the local land ownership may or may not change. The soils will also remain the same. So knowing, you know, for, in terms of being the, you know, the planner. That makes a lot of sense.
So I didn't know if the, if the study was just gonna do like, there's a couple examples, or if they were gonna do the whole, the whole villages and say, this is. You know, four different options for, I mean, it's.
Four, six, seven, whatever it is, all.
They're gonna do all.
All of it, whatever it is.
Or are they only gonna do with the feasible, the feasible?
No, they're doing studies on what can be done. That's what can be done. That's, which is feasible.
There's, there's two different approaches, an input and output approach. I mean, the other thing is if you can come up with a community well. So then you, your separation distances go away. And then you can redo your septic system onsite and it's no big deal, but.
Yeah, yeah, it, it was very important that, that, you know, because the initial phase seemed to, or thought. Uh, it seemed to be generalized on community. The community system. Dave Fuller a- and I were both very adamant that this, wait a minute, we need all solutions. Large, small, individual, does not matter. We need all of it.
Need the options.
Perkinsville's also one of those primary aquifer recharge areas. Because it has the sandy soil. Well, sandy soils are great for septic system, but they're also good for water system, and you don't wanna mix. But, uh, I think it might be cheaper. Uh, and more practical to do like a water system. If you have an aquifer there, it has the recharge capability, then they. Try to do all of these different.
I, I see, oh, yeah, I, I, yeah, I see your point, yeah.
What, what's the timeline, Mike? Do you know what they're, the next, uh?
I don't believe we're finished with, with phase two.
Right, I didn't think we were. It's, they've been working on that for a while.
Updated one, the slide board meetings probably about three months ago, three or four months ago, I would say like.
Well, it was more than that, wasn't it?
It's like April or something, cause I don't know, is it one meeting where there was an update?
And I think that was the phase one, the, the completion of phase one in the, or actually. Phase one had ended before that, they started phase two and then, uh, I think they were brought in for an update for the new board.
Be nice to have.
It's about April, somewhere in there.
Okay.
If I remember.
So I'll, I'll put something in here about technology and get some clarification on a couple of.
I'll, and I'll, I'll get ahold of Brandon and find out what's going on.
And then I, if everybody's okay with this, with the exception of the goals. The policies of the goals, I'm gonna clean this up and get everything clean above line four forty if I can.
Yep.
Just because we need to.
I'll work on those goals this week.
I'll get with Gray.
If you get a draft, Ryan, send it to me and I'll take a look at it. I'm sure we can't get something for the next meeting, because I'm gonna miss the. Second meeting in November, so I'll be here for the next one.
Second meeting in November will be getting close to Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you had that whole kerfuffle there too. Cause I'm there to be gone on that, that twentieth, which is the third. Let's just look at this, uh, I'll be gone on the seventeenth.
Thanksgiving's the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
So our meeting's the twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the third and the seventeenth.
Yeah, I'll be gone for the seventeenth, so I'll be here for the next meeting and then I'll be gone after that. I'll miss that one meeting, then I'm back in December and then we get that whole. Well, we get the first and the fifteenth of December.
Did, we could jam third meeting in on the twenty-ninth, but. That's holiday season.
Did, did, uh, yeah. Question, did the line numbers on this change?
Yes, a little bit.
Yes.
I'm looking at my notes thinking like, huh.
And there's nothing there.
Doesn't make sense here either.
I almost love both of them, man.
Hank, I just did that to torture you, you know, just so you know.
It only took till almost eight fifteen.
You gotta start the whole meeting over pretty much. No, just the section. In fact, we don't. But on line. I found the first one. It might be helpful. I gotta, I might have a couple more. Um, but on line, it was eighty-six and now it's one oh six. We say there.
Of what?
Of. The section we're currently in, which is facilities and utilities.
Okay.
One oh six, sorry, yeah, you know, I'm not going back that far.
The power plant one?
Yeah, the power plant one. There are no power plants located in Weathersville, an oil-fired generating facility in Ascutney. That doesn't, that feels like.
That's gone.
That's gone? But the, like, I feel like that first sentence could go away.
Yes, it could.
Because.
It was meant to be edited, but somehow I can't ever get it out.
Cause I feel like we talked about this, but I don't know what if I'm just, you know, sometimes I'm just talking to myself, though. A lot of it's, you're, you know, you. A lot of.
Hank?
Yes.
Unless you wanna make a distinction between power plants and generated.
Don't really look to. I don't really want to. I don't, I think, uh, yeah, I mean, as you wish, but. I would just skip the first sentence.
Okay, I'll remove.
But it, but if you feel like that's important, it just feels like.
I think no more set.
Do you wanna see the lines from the old version?
No, don't confuse them.
Four nine, what, what line number is four nineteen? It might be four thirty-nine or forty-nine. It seems like I'm adding twenty on the last.
Four nineteen for the one that you. Would have been the first, uh. Would have been four point seven point one under utilities, facilities, policies.
Seven, oh. But that's why I have doing policies today, so we're done.
But if you have a comment about policies. Please say so, so we save time next.
Developers may require, be required to pay for water line extension, water storage expansion within the sunny water district. Um. Maybe it's just too complicated, but it feels like. I mean, I'm also not a repair for that system, but it feels like. Um, adding, in the long run, adding some more users would be worth a little bit of communal investment, because they're gonna pay forever and. That's just like, uh, an upfront cost for a coffee. Well, it seems like. You know. That's not our prerogative, but it feels like. Something. Yeah.
That the town might have an interest in.
It seems like adding a few rate, I mean, if I was.
I think the whole thing will become a municipal. System, but the. If fire and water, you know, all rolled into one. I mean, if you've got. These tanks that are being put in for fire protection. Fire protection basically is to save people that are on the public water supply.
That whole line, it seems like that could just be taken out, cause it's not really a town plan policy, it's just, that's like, that should be the policy of the department.
Right, I mean, this isn't really our, so.
I'm just gonna delete that.
Great, yeah. Great.
Okay.
Yeah, that works. The one that says, uh, four sixty-eight. I think, I think maybe sports trails of the Scotty Basin turned into the ATA. Yes, so.
So the STAV should disappear?
Yes. Um. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I got. Though I did wonder, we, we kinda say that you're not allowed to have a private marina.
Or not?
Yeah, well, of course, let's see, um.
Which one's that?
Uh, public four, four eighty-eighty-eight, public boat access to the Connecticut River shall be limited to non-motorized boat access only. Our boat access and marina development to the Connecticut River is not in conformance with this town plan.
What?
Number one, uh, New Hampshire controls the river since they own our shoreline. So I don't know how we can regu- regularly, what kind of use the river has. Well, in terms of power boats, we can't. Prohibit them. Cause we don't own the river.
And the only. The only public access right now to the river is the park.
Right, right.
And you're only allowed to now launch canoes or rowboats there.
Right, sure.
Having recently launched a canoe there a month ago. I don't think you can get through.
You can't, it's blocked, no, the gate, there's a gate across that, grass fairy room, and I don't think you can dive down there.
You said, Hank, maybe we should, um.
On ferry road? I'm pretty sure there's a gate.
So Hank, you wanna eliminate part of that?
Oh, I don't know. It just seemed a little odd that. Oddly specific, I mean. Unlikely that somebody is gonna build a marina.
Unlikely that somebody is gonna build a marina, but like. Yeah, maybe it's okay if they do. I mean, we're we were kind of thinking of talking about recreational stuff and I don't know.
Recreational kind of, I mean, just seem.
Personally, like the place that dump a jet ski in that's not having to go all the way down to Springfield. Me, personally.
Yeah, it seemed oddly specific, I don't know.
So what's the consensus here? We have one jet ski. Anybody else have strong feelings?
I think it should come out and.
It kind of feels like.
It doesn't even seem like the right place to even be talking about it.
I think it will from now, everybody agrees, alright?
So I got. Thanks for the help.
That's it, Hank?
That's all I got. I wish, I wish I had more.
I mean, we got time.
We must be getting something done because this it's three chapters in a night that we can get through.
Yeah.
So Ryan, what what's left?
Um, transportation. Um, health and human services. Uh. Let's see, what else?
How's it coming along?
Um, housing is. Good, I worked on it. Not last week, but the week before, I forget where I left off, um. We'll have a, we'll have a draft for housing for the next meeting.
So, I guess my question is. Let's say we get. The three we talked about tonight cleaned up enough to go for a preliminary run at the select board. You do all three of them to the select board? Like they have the have the time for that, that was my concern.
Well, they haven't taken all that much time.
I gotta say, we basically it's just a distribution uh for them to get a chance to read. And do a summary? Yeah, and be prepared. Kinda, it it we didn't spend any time really. Just more of an introductory. Yeah.
I think it's an opportunity for a board member to say, I have a problem with this, we need to talk about that before it being at the hearing.
At the hearing, exactly.
Do we have a a feeling about whether that's happening? We got some feedback, but not a lot.
Every, everybody has to understand the amount of work that's going in here, the amount of effort that's going in to get the word out. Into the select board and the the fact that we do not have a town plan. And although we'll get it close, uh I mean, we'll get it as close to perfect as we can, but it won't be perfect. And definitely adjustments and changes that we can come back and do later. People are gonna have to accept that. If there's something that's gross, let's fix it. But I I we're we're getting to the point where we shouldn't be dealing with anything more than. Um, what what's called a minor, um. Which doesn't kick it back to us. Right, you know, that's important.
And I think it's it's helpful that we've had. The majority of the select board has been here at.
Yeah.
A variety of meetings and by going up there, they're sort of familiar with things.
We, I wish you had said that.
No, it's not a majority at any one meeting, it's a it's a majority over several.
Well, that's it's.
Another board can gather at another board's meeting.
They can, because we're not, that is true, that is true, we can.
But the idea that we've worked through a lot of problems is helpful for the board to have seen and gone through. So you're always here, but we've had two other members who have seen. In the process as opposed to they're working on their own business, we all go up at all the same.
So what I was driving at, when do we think we can launch this thing? You think? We're not gonna make it by the end of the year, are we? Based on the number of meetings left?
I don't think so.
I don't.
Um, but I think um January, we'll probably be, we'll probably be really putting the finishing touches. We'll probably have a a hearing warned in January would be my guess. That'd be my.
My guess is I'm trying to push us a little bit, do we wanna plan and warn a hearing, because we need to let this thing finish.
I I see where you're going.
Just say, look, this is, we're gonna, we're gonna finish this thing by hook or by crook. It ain't gonna be perfect.
Yeah.
But we just can't keep working on this thing. We need to get a town plan and and we're willing to go back and manage it. Because, you know, we could go on this thing another two months and I'm like.
I think it depends on who's gonna do the work by hook or by crook. For example, I haven't opened the email that Ryan generous has sent me on the chat. Other chapter that I hope to work on and I might get to it or somebody else might get to it, but I'm not volunteering to have gotten to that. By a certain date.
We can't warn the hearing until we have a final package put together, because that has to be distributed.
So we have transportation, housing, health and human services.
I think we should try and get all of these chapters before the select board, before the end of the year, for sure. Um, and then we.
That's a reasonable.
And then we can be working on the final package and warning hearing in January. And if it's sooner than that, great, but that seems like a fairly realistic goal.
So is three chapters still outlined that need to be done, right?
And those are not big chapters, the thing.
Yeah, I think we're pretty close.
It's 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 one hearing here, is it one hearing at the select board? So we have to hold a public hearing first before we hand it to the.
Thirty day warning. Um, then we hold a hearing. Um. And then I don't know if it's thirty or fifteen at the select board. But, yeah, we have to warn our own hearing, which is thirty days, and then they have to warn another hearing.
So this is gonna be a really dumb idea or a thought. Should we figure they can warn a hearing now?
So just to really kind of. How much you're volunteering to do.
I I I I kind of like Ryan's idea of let's. Let's be done with this bef- before the end of the year.
Yeah, I don't I don't feel confident that's taking enough shape to really, I don't think we're doing.
Two more meetings and then talk about it again.
Yeah.
Or one more, at least one or two more.
Yeah, we should just have in the back of our heads, we wanna warn a meeting.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
I mean, I guess we should try and warn a hearing before the end of the year. That that should probably be the goal.
Well, if we're gonna warn a hearing by the end of the year, we got two meetings.
No, it doesn't need to be done here. Whenever we're ready, I'll just warn a hearing. We don't need to do it in a meeting.
Can we do a special meeting if necessary for that hearing so we can squeeze it in this year?
The hearing?
Let's let's see how 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 it goes getting through these chapters, so these three are almost done, we've got three left, that's it.
If we if we have a meeting before the end of the year where we've gone through them all and they've all been presented and we're all feeling good about it, then we'll start to compile it. And I'll warn a hearing as soon as we can.
Right, so we're gonna be that January and something, but our goal is gonna be to try to get the last three chapters by the end of the year.
I think it's doable.
Yeah, okay, I think so. That was helpful, thank you.
Alright, uh, well, I actually kind of don't care about the suspension for future items.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't need, uh, we don't need anything else on future items, we're good right now.
Yes.
Uh, any other business that can legally be discussed? Want to refer German?
Uh, November, Thanksgiving is there.
So we're meeting on the third, there's an election day on the fourth that pops up for me. I don't know what that significance is.
They're gonna be setting up down here, so we're gonna.
And then December. The first and fifteenth. Yep. Okay, so I I just was looking ahead to pick up now. We have four meetings to get it done. Yeah, I'll miss one. And you're missing one. I'm gonna miss one.
I'll jump back in thousand.
Okay, yeah, let me let me finish up what I got going on the housing and I'll send it to you.
And Hank, what are you trying to work on?
Health and human services.
Okay. Could happen, presentation week.
Oh, send that one to me too and Hank and I can kinda. Uh, I'll throw some thoughts into it and then if that will be inspiring you a little bit. So I'll put down words in there. Yeah, as you wish, you're you're more than welcome to it. As I said, I haven't opened it, but I know there's an email. Well, over the next three weeks, most of my uh my rental properties have dropped off to nothing, so I have a little opening. Yes. Doesn't mean that the workloads drop down, but I can. Exactly, because I know as soon as Thanksgiving hits, I'm, see you guys. Alright, one for German. I want everybody to speak at once. All in favor?
Second.